Present.
One second.
The wire is just blank. I just like it to put there that I basically have nothing to report. So.
Got it.
It doesn't look like it. It's just, maybe it's just an oversight.
Anything else?
I know for that one, that was simple.
Anyone else have edits for the April ninth meeting?
Uh, Krista, I do.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, packet page fourteen, um, the committee report under my name, um, the second sentence.
That's the next one, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. It is the next one. Yep, yep. Sorry. Thanks, Dan.
All right. Well, hold off on those then.
Yep.
Any last edits for April ninth? I'll go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, Ann, why don't we start with you?
Okay, yeah. So packet page fourteen, um, the committee report under my name, uh, the second sentence there, uh, the word quarter is used and I meant, and I said corridor. Is that sort of a?
Oh, okay.
An important distinction. Um, and then that same, um, page, um, and the, the next bullet, I think, is, uh, the, it should, there should be a period after mid-May in the third sentence and, uh, and then the cooperative agreement should be in its own bullet for the village transportation project or transformation project.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
Yep, I think it just makes it more understandable.
All right. Anything else?
That'll do for me.
Okay. Anyone else have edits? Dan?
Just a couple of small ones. On packet page twelve, where we appointed Susan Tuskoff for the, to be the warden, there was just a thank you from the council for her for stepping forward to fill that task. Just think that should be noted there. And then essentially the same thing again with the next motion for the election officials. Just, I remember thanking people for stepping forward to fill those roles. I just think, I just think it's important that we, you know, record the fact that we acknowledge our appreciation for the people who are stepping up to do this, these, these jobs.
Sure.
That sounds good. And that's Susan Suecroft, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Matthew, Marty, did you have any? I also didn't have any. So I'll go to vote. Um, Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Computer's slow, sorry. Um, okay, next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone in chambers who'd like to make a comment on non-agenda items? Come on up.
Yeah, I just had a.
Sorry, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Gary Foster, Waymouth Road.
Thank you.
Now, just a question is, is, will there be public comment allowed under the auditing services of order?
Uh, we don't typically allow public comment for action items. Um, if you'd like to make a comment now, you can go ahead.
Yeah, that was my, my purpose.
Okay.
And I, I read the, um, I read the information sent by Ron Bollier's company. Um, well, first, well, first, I guess I was wondering, um, if he was the best offer that came in. I presume you send out RFPs. That's the way it's typically done. But that, um, limit of a hundred thousand seems exceedingly high. I would think a limit of not to exceed thirty thousand would be more in line with a audit for account on this side based on my past experience. Also, I've learned that there's, um, that company has had some legal issues in the past. They had their license to practice suspended in New Hampshire due to malpractice and failure to maintain records, which I, I see as a red flag. I don't, uh, I don't think that's a very good, um, uh. It doesn't sound like a really very good reputable company. I know the Town of Gray has used, uh, RKO in the past with good results. Uh, when I was at EcoMaine, um, we used RKO as well. I don't think, even, even at EcoMaine, we, at the time, I think it was a twenty-six million dollar budget. I think we were maybe in the forty thousand dollar range. Nowhere's near approaching a hundred thousand. I would suggest you look at, um, and is, any of the other proposals you may have got and see if there's something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll certainly address those concerns when we consider the audit, um, as an action item. Anyone else here make a comment?
I'd like to, uh, do a follow-up.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just introduce?
Thank you. So how many RFPs did you send out to find an auditor?
As I said a minute ago, I'll address the concerns when we're considering.
You have to talk into a microphone because I can't hear you?
I'm talking into the microphone. I apologize if you can't hear, but we, I'll address concerns about the audit when we talk about it as a council during the action items. But if you'd like to make a comment now.
Okay, sure. I've got, uh, to add to that. Uh, also in the Cumberland County Registered Deeds, uh, the, uh, page, uh, in book four hundred fifty-six, page three forty-eight, um, there is, um, uh, his home, Ram Bully's home is, is, is up for, um, they're taking the home. So, uh, I, I don't think this sounds like a, um, all around. This is really serious. We should have, uh, spent more time looking. And again, excess of a hundred thousand dollars is crazy, you know? Okay, now, the other thing I want to, uh, talk about, uh, is the, I was in the town office saying, I see that, uh, Randy's letter is still hanging on the wall. I guess my question is, how much longer is that going to be there? How much longer is he going to be punished? Do you have an answer for that?
Um, I, that's up to Mike. Again, we're not here for discussion, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. And also then, uh, may I add, and, uh, for consideration of the council, for consideration, at the last council meeting, uh, the town manager, uh, misled the public in believing that they could use the money from the Anacon TIF. And you know, I spoke here against it because I had been present and I knew the TIF. And, um, um, and then when I asked for the lawyer's letter, it's when they couldn't, he couldn't produce it. So, uh, that is, uh, something that really needs to be addressed. He needs a letter of apology and that, a letter of apology needs to go to the same route that Randy's did. On Facebook, uh, hanging up on the wall and things like that. A letter of an apology will go a long way in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else just like to make a comment? I'm not seeing anyone online. So I will close public comment at, at seven eleven P M. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda this evening? Okay, so I will move on to public hearings. First up is a first reading, um, to review and act upon proposed amendments to the building code ordinance, chapter two zero one, with regards to updated ordinance language references and reorganization, with a second reading and public hearing before the town council on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. I'm looking for a motion, um, for the Gray Town Council to approve a public hearing and second reading at the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four town council meeting, uh, to, uh, in reference to the items I just listed.
So moved.
Second.
So I'm just realizing, do we, um, are we just having one public hearing for this because it's not, it's not a land use?
Yes.
Okay, just want to clarify that. All right, um, does anyone have any comments on this ordinance or these amendments that have been suggested? Um, Tammy, would you mind coming up just to give a, I know your memo was very thorough, but, um, you could just give an explanation for the people watching at home?
I'm sure. It's Tammy Munson, the code enforcement officer. Um, basically, this was an ordinance that hadn't been updated in several years. And the references to state, to some of the different state, um, codes that have been adopted were not in this. Um, and so really it was some pretty much, um, really correcting clerical items to get more in line with what should be adopted by the town based on the state law.
Right. I didn't really notice anything, um, major, um, of concern or, it's really like language changes, definition updates, um, and adding.
Correct. And it didn't reference, there, there was, there was not a mechanical code referenced in our, um, Town of Gray building chapter. And then I believe that there was not, um, the other thing that was not in here is it did not state that you actually needed a permit to do electrical work in that was also added. Other than that, it's pretty benign.
Anyone have any comments or concerns to add?
No.
Not seeing any from Ann either. Okay, so, thanks. Tammy? I will go to vote, um, and we will move forward with a public hearing and second reading at, on May twenty-first. Oh, what's that?
Do we have to close the public hearing?
There's no public hearing for this. Is that the next meeting?
Oh, sorry.
That's what I was wondering about when it was paused. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. So I will go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm also a yes. Okay, so next up is a first reading, uh, to review and act upon proposed amendment to the parking ordinance, chapter five zero two, with regards to Seagull Drive, with a second reading and public hearing before the town council on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. So I'm just reading this again. It, it, we are calling it a second hearing.
Yeah, confused.
Yeah.
So this, this item that has to have the, the second reading on the May twenty-first is, so, and, and the public hearings right now.
Okay, because the way we're wording this, it sounds like we're not doing public hearing, at least the one before. We were not doing public hearing tonight, but we were doing one next time because it's a land use.
Well, the way that, the way the clerk had, had these laid out on the agenda was the public hearings were happening tonight for these two items.
Okay.
And then the second reading is happening at the next, at the next meeting, similar to how we handle the budget and things like that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, in the past, we've, we've included the words public hearing in the motion, um, for the first read also, but I, I understand.
I can clarify where.
Yeah. I understand that they're, um, under the public hearings header, so that was my mistake. So I'd like to backtrack and just, I know this is a little atypical. I would like to open a public hearing for the building code ordinance at seven fifteen P M. Because I was misreading how we were reading that. Does anyone have any comments on the building code ordinance? Not seeing anyone online. Okay, so I will close that, uh, first public hearing at seven sixteen P M. And so I'm going to, um, look for a, a public hearing for the next section, the public hearing and a first reading for, um, an amendment to the parking ordinance, chapter five zero two, with regards to Seagull Drive, Drive, with a second reading and public hearing, um, for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
So I will, uh, open the public hearing at seven sixteen P M. Does anyone have any comments on this, um, consideration for an amendment to the parking ordinance? Seeing none, I will close, uh, public hearing at seven seventeen P M. Do any counselors have any comments on this ordinance? Um, I just, Kurt, why don't you give a quick, uh, synopsis? I know your memo did that, but if you wouldn't mind for the public?
Kurt Alcantara, chief for Town of Gray. Uh, I'm asking for the council to consider marking Seagull Drive, no parking on both sides of the road. Lately, it's been getting more of an issue with cars and trucks parking on Seagull. It's really, it's certainly not designed to have parking on Seagull. And particularly now with the fresh pavement, if someone tries to park on the side of the road, they're going to be going off the pavement and ruining, damaging the money we spent on, on, on that road. There's just no room. And when people park on the road, it just creates pure havoc on the weekends and people trying to get out and pull in. And it makes it very difficult for firefighters to get out safely and save the public, um, public works to power trucks. I think everybody's going to appreciate no parking on that road. And I'm not talking about the area down by the, uh, transfer station where people do the fundraising. That's not part of Seagull. It's off the side.
Yeah, I have noticed of late, um, there's been several instances where I've driven by and there's tractor trailers parked on Seagull Drive. And it looks like it's usually in the evening hours and overnight. I just thought perhaps they were doing, uh, transfer station business. But do you know if that's, is that an example of some people parking there and?
Yes, that's the most obvious one. And that's what caused, brought Tim and I's attention to the, to the problem.
Okay, yeah.
It's unfortunate when you put signs up, but at least that gives us cause to say you need to move your vehicle.
Right, yeah, I mean, public safety building is right there. And as you state, that could be a safety hazard if people are, especially a tractor and trailers blocking that road. Um, anyone else have thoughts or comments on this update?
I have a couple of questions.
Dan?
Um, Chief, I was just wondering if the, um, for a second here. The Route twenty-six designations, because that changed when we did the, um, when we made those changes. And I just wondered if those had been updated here in the ordinance at the same time since we're opening this ordinance? I don't even know if those were clerical changes that were made before or.
All this proposal is to just add that, um, section V. So we didn't review the, the full ordinance as part of this, this change. It's just to add section V. I didn't know whether or not any of that had been reviewed. I can.
I think, I mean, since the designation has changed, it would be inaccurate in here, so we might as well.
We'll, we'll review all the, all of them to make sure they're, they're compliant.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be a substantial change. So we can move, we can move forward with a second reading and a public hearing.
So you want me to bring those forth for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think if, I think to Dan's point, because twenty-six A is now renamed twenty-six. And so if we're referencing sections of road here that are, we just want to make sure they're all the accurate places.
We'll verify they're all accurate.
Yeah.
And then the only other thought was, and it isn't anything that has to be changed now, but in some of the ordinance, we talk about so many feet from places where parking isn't allowed. And in other parts of the ordinance, we use pole numbers. And I just think that it would make sense to sort of pick one and standardize that. I would think the pole numbers are probably easier because it's much easier for someone to see a pole number than it is to guess where five hundred and ten feet is from, from a, um.
I mean, I'm guessing where they reference things like that, there might not be poles to reference, you know?
Yeah, it's possible.
I think these were all just added one at a time and never taken into consideration for, um, consistency. And the, the way that we structured this one was consistent with one of the more recent ones for Libby Hill Road. And so that's why we kind of went with that, to try to be simple.
Yep, no, I, I, it's not a criticism. I just think since we're cracking it open, it makes sense to look at the whole thing and not just these pieces. But I have certainly have no problems with the changes for Seagull Drive. If anything, I think we ought to put needing to add a turning lane on Seagull Drive in our capital improvement plan because people are constantly stuck at the end of that road on busy weekends trying to get out. There really needs to be a right and a left hand turning as plain as you exit ideally.
That's section from where, um, I'll call it a bypass because I, it's always going to be a bypass to me. The bypass comes into twenty-six.
Yeah.
From there to the high school that needs to be three lanes or two and a half lanes.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, that's a D O, that's a D O P decision, but, but I think Dan's right. We could, as a, as a town, perhaps look into a turning lane just coming off of Seagull Drive.
Just a thought. I mean, it's not a.
That's not relevant to this ordinance, but yeah.
No, that's all I have.
I had a quick question, um, Krista? Yeah, I just was, I, I was really puzzled about the parking. I mean, so it really is happening more at night, not during the day. It's not people accessing like the, the, um, you know, the place where people leave stuff, the, the shack there. It's not, it's not due to that. They're not parking on, on Seagull Drive and, and walking into the transfer station. They're just leaving their stuff vehicles there overnight.
Correct.
Yeah, Kurt's saying, yeah, it's, and as I stated, I, I've seen a lot of tractor trailers parking there.
Okay, I hadn't seen that, but thank you. Just put.
Did you have something to add, Kurt?
No, I was trying to speak closer to the mic.
Okay. Final thoughts? Okay, I will go to vote, um, on the public hearing and second read at the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four council meeting. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Okay, I am looking for a motion, uh, for the Gray Town Council to authorize the town manager to sign the proposed auditing services agreements with Ron A. Bulu, how mu, am I saying that wrong?
Bullier.
How do you say?
Bullier.
Bullier, I apologize. And company not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars in services for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I just want to address some of the comments we had during public comment. The limit, um, is again, a, a limit of a hundred thousand dollars. It's not to exceed that amount. Uh, it's an estimate, uh, but any monies that we don't spend for F Y twenty-three will be rolled over into any future services and future audits. Also, this is actually two, um, proposals, um, from, from Ron. It's, uh, one for the F Y twenty-three audit, which is much overdue, as many of you know. And also, um, for a separate, um, agreement for him to organize, um, our financial statements so that we can move forward with clear and, um, accurate information going forward. Um, in regards to RFPs, we went out to bid for an auditor, I think, three times in the last year. Each time we received one bid. Um, the first time, um, actually, the first time we did receive two. One from our current auditor and another, um, firm where we voted to secure that firm. Uh, and shortly thereafter, uh, the principal at that firm passed away, um, so we couldn't pursue that one. We went out to bid, um, another time. We received no proposals. And then, um, this third time, uh, we have, we basically had to initiate contact, uh, with firms because we really are not getting, uh, any bids. And that's not a reflection of the town. It's just a reflection of the environment of auditors right now. It's very difficult to secure an auditor for municipal services. And so as Mike addressed during the budget meetings, um, this is, um, much needed. Um, we really need to get our finances in order so that we can move forward with this, this year, um, the F Y twenty-three audit, but also the F Y twenty-four and to come. but also the F Y twenty four and to come F Y twenty five, which um will be here before we know it. So um this this firm has been highly recommended according to Mike and Justine, um and um we're certainly comfortable with moving forward with them. Mike, did you wanna?
Yeah, I'll just add, um, this isn't just a a standard audit either. This is a more thorough, um extensive audit. As you can see from the memo from the auditing firm, um we're considered a high-risk oddity. And so um there is a much more thorough process that they're gonna do and not just a basic audit that would cost, you know, around twenty-five thousand dollars. And so um that's why the extensive cost um for this audit. This is also critically important and as outlined in the memo because um the, there's been, since the, in a in a few short years, there's been four town managers, four finance directors, um and we've had the same auditing firm for over fifteen years. So there's been a lot of transition, a lot of turnover, so having somebody um come in here to take a clean look so we can have everything documented. So uh both myself and our finance director um can't be held accountable for errors of the past. So we can help to bring everything in order or have at least everything documented and then work with the resources that we have with this uh firm as well as some financial support that we have and our restructuring of the finance department to help put us in order for future years. I'll also note, um there was a mention of um legal troubles for this firm in New Hampshire. This was a an issue that that firm experienced dating as far back as two thousand eight, and uh it was something that they disputed. And if any research you do about it on the internet, they publicly disputed it and their their license got suspended for three years. They are a well-respected firm in the area and highly recommended by a number of firms that were unable to provide services for us as well as highly recommended by uh our legal counsel. And so in order for us to to get things in order, um this firm is here. As far as the issue with the registry of deeds, I don't, I don't know anything about that. And uh that that wasn't uh shared um with us in reference to the issue, but it's not, it, you know, the, he didn't agree with the issue in New Hampshire, and it's a matter of how long and how much money does someone wanna spend to fight an issue? And instead, they took their punishment and and resumed work. They're licensed in New Hampshire, and they're practicing in both Maine and New Hampshire with no other issues. So um uh it was, it was a one-off in this situation. I'm very confident that this individual will be able to to provide a thorough review of our finances here, which is uh greatly necessary and and fair to myself and the new finance director.
Thank you, Mike, for that context. Any other counselors like to make a comment? Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, there's no doubt that the price tag is a frightening amount of money. The first time we put an R F P out, we saw the cost for our auditing services just about double. The next time that we went out, we didn't get any um response to the R F P except our previous auditor. Uh, and that price had gone up considerably too, uh more than doubled at that point in time. Given the problems that we've had in the past, I think it's been said before that this audit is a deeper dive into our books um so that we can have a clean start. And most importantly, I think rebuild some confidence on the part of voters and taxpayers in the numbers that they get from from the town. I think that legal issues are absolutely valid concerns to bring forward. But uh as others have said, um the the bit of research that I've done is um I've talked to a couple of people who have worked with them, and um I I think this is, I think it makes sense for us to make a change because we have had the same auditing firm for so long. A previous town finance director works for that auditing auditing firm. That's not to say that there was any problems related to that at all in any way, shape, or form. They were always cautious to to keep those things separate. But I just think after all those years, it's good for us to have a fresh pair of eyes, take a look at our books and and uh give us some confidence in where we are with our numbers.
Thanks, Dan. Any other comments?
I guess I would just, I um comment about the former auditing firm. They didn't submit a, you know, they didn't submit a proposal, right?
Well.
This last time?
This last time, we I, we didn't have a full R F P because we weren't successful in that the last three times we went out. Mike and Justine reached out to several firms and I think.
So we were looking for the deeper dive audit that we were talking about to kind of reset everything and and starting with a new firm. And so there's not a lot of firms as um the chairs mentioned in the area. So this was something that we we reached out to firms in the area to try to get someone to help us with this more deep dive audit that's necessary. And so we had to, we had to basically negotiate with with firms to be able to do this work.
There was, there were three other R F Ps where we weren't, we weren't successful in securing an auditor through those or really securing any any significant bids, to be honest.
And I guess, I mean, I haven't been here long, but my experience on this council tells me that there is definitely a deep and thorough audit needed of the finances. So um and and yes, I agree, a hundred thousand dollars seems ridiculous, but um we don't, you know, they don't know what they're gonna find, we don't know what they're gonna find, um but I want them to look.
Right. Dan, you had a follow-up comment?
Yeah, sorry, there is one more thing. One of the things that was in the proposal is the length of time to do the audit, which could be up to a year. And I just, this isn't anything that influences the decision necessarily because I think that was true with some of the other figures that I saw. But I am wondering how we're gonna catch up or even stay ahead if it takes a whole year to do an audit going forward, so.
Well, hopefully, once we get this base one down, our our financial statements will be in order. So then they can build off of those financial statements that balance out. And hopefully, the fiscal year twenty four audit, um with everything balanced out and the, all the efforts that we are undertaking to to straighten things out, we'll be able to do that one much faster at a normal pace.
Thank you.
One question I had, Mike, um I believe there was some concerns from the firm about the fact that this would be past our charter requirement for um a timeline for an audit, which, I mean, we're already well past that to begin with. Uh, I'm just wondering if we should note that extension that's necessary, obviously, um in our motion? Or if we feel it's sufficient the way it's worded?
I think you've acknowledged it publicly a number of times that that that, that that is um not in compliance, and we've identified our efforts to get into compliance.
Okay. Are our counselors comfortable with that or? Yeah, okay. Ann's shaking her head yes to. Any other comments?
I've no.
Okay, I will go to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Uh, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, um, next up is to review and approve the interlocal agreement with the town of North Yarmouth for code enforcement officer support. Looking for a motion for the Gray Town Council to authorize the town manager to sign the interlocal agreement with the town of North Yarmouth for code enforcement officer support.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. If I just may briefly, I've shared this item with um the council and the public a number of times. We were working on this, uh getting this agreement finalized. Our our legal counsel was on vacation in April and um getting uh North Yarmouth's conflict council to review it. Took us a little longer than we anticipated, but we we started helping North Yarmouth on April first when they lost their um code enforcement officer abruptly. And so we're going to um work to support them um while they evaluate what their next options are. Our code enforcement officer, Tammy Munson, is here, um and if anyone has any questions specifically about how um this works. But in this, the month that we've had, it's worked very well. There's been a minimal amount of inspections. And we've been able to support them, and they've been very happy with our services so far, and so we think this will work out. Um, the uh town of North Yarmouth is voting on this. Their their board, uh select board, I think they're called, there's a.
Correct.
Select board is voting on this this evening, and they'd like to continue with this service through the fiscal year, through the next fiscal year and as they evaluate what what they'd like to do and if they wanna work out something with us long term. Um, they'll be compensating us forty thousand dollars a year for these services billed on a monthly basis as well as mileage for our code enforcement staff. And um there's minimal increased costs associated with, for, on our end for this, so it'll be um a significant benefit to the town. And as I indicated when we voted on the budget warrants, um reflecting this this estimated revenue in our budget helped to to minimize the tax rate increase even more, so. If anybody wants to ask Tammy any questions about how this works, or Tammy, do you wanna have anything you wanna share?
Uh, no, it's pretty, it's been going very well. I've been down there for about five weeks. I would say at this point, we've probably done about six inspections for them over the course of five weeks. So there's not a high demand down there.
How does that compare to our, the demand you see here in Gray for the same period of time?
Oh, we'd be doing probably eighty to a hundred.
Okay.
Over a month, yeah. You know, they have a growth ordinance down there, so that also limits um the number of units that they can build per year. So um but right now, what I'm doing for them is I'm assessing and evaluating for their town manager. And if we feel that there's a need for something, then, you know, I'll I'll talk to Mike and Diane, their manager, and and come up with what I think they need, but right now, I think that we can cover this. I think it's working out very well. Um, one of my inspectors had an inspection on Long Hill the other day, and he was probably a tenth of a mile from the North Yarmouth line and drove over the line and did an inspection and came back. So um it seems to be, to be working out just fine. The other thing that's helpful is that they're open later on days where we were, than than we are. It's kind of like opposite se- schedules.
That was gonna be my question, how with the new, with our new schedule, does that, how does that?
Right, so so like Mondays, they're open till six, so I'm usually down there in the afternoon. I usually leave late afternoon and go down there and stay until six o'clock. Thursdays, they're all, they'll be open till five. I'll also be down there, you know, probably two thirty or three o'clock in the afternoon after we close. So it's very minimal impact on um, if any, on our operation here, which is how I wanted to make sure that it was structured.
So is it, it's, it sounds like you're sharing um the uh services with your, with the two other code enforcement officers here in Gray, not just you going over there to complete this?
Correct, it all depends on where they are and who's calling for for what's needed. And right now, it 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 will be both of them. Right now, it's primarily um one of my deputies that has been going down there and doing the majority of stuff. But it's, it's, there's, it's not a high demand by any means.
And it allows us to provide a better service for both them and the town because we have different code enforcement officers that have different skill sets and different expertise that they didn't necessarily have. So now we have basically three different code enforcement officers at their disposal. And with our um extended hours, we're able to get our two part-time uh code enforcement officers here more, and so we're able to to spread those hours um appropriately. But it is only five to ten hours a week. So as as Tammy mentioned, she goes down there a couple of afternoons for a couple of hours, and then um the rest of the time are random inspections, and so it seems to be working out well. We do have as part of the contract, if we figure out that it's not working out well, and they figure out it's not working out well, we can terminate it with a thirty-day notice. But we're fairly confident it's gonna work out well and be a win-win for everyone. North Yarmouth has been um a good partner to the town over the years, and uh we'll definitely uh continue to see what we can do to help them out and vice versa. If we're ever in a jam, they would do the same for us.
Yeah, I, thanks, Tammy. I think this is gonna come up a lot more often. I know um we've met with other towns as part of some convenings that have been regional. And there's an interest in potentially sharing services for animal control, and people have mentioned other similar types of services. I think this is gonna come up.
The the chief and I are meeting this month for a study about fire departments.
Right. Any other com, Dan?
Yeah, in your, in your report to us, Mike, you talked a little bit about North Yarmouth, but you also mentioned that as far as Fridays were concerned, there was gonna be some um arrangement to.
Yeah, so we, we're, we're, in case there's, if there's like weather inconveniences, one of the concerns of um s- uh citizens that had come into at our budget hearing was concerns about if there's weather inconveniences and they might have to wait three days. So we're gonna work with contractors to try to, if they have those things, to maybe try to schedule inspector to come in on on a Friday to help with those inspections. So if there's, for instance, it it, it might happen this week because this after today, the beautiful weather we had, there's three days of rain or or whether, if that's something that we need to work out, it's something we're gonna work out. And we're, we're not gonna necessarily have to do it every week or every time, but um we're gonna work. We've asked contractors who are concerned about that to let us know and and work with us and give Tammy enough of a heads up so we can flex hours for staff uh who are able to do that.
North Yarmouth is one of our neighboring towns that is also closed on Fridays.
Yes, they are as well, yeah. So there's no conflict with that.
Right. Any other comments? Okay, I will go to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you, Tammy, for sticking it out with us here. Um, next up is a report from council chair. Um, just wanna remind everybody of our workshop next Tuesday at six o'clock, fourteenth, um where we'll go over um updates from the planning department to the uh land use and zoning maps that Doug and his team have been working on and the O A C. Looking forward to doing that. Also, Community Day is scheduled for May nineteenth, uh for twelve to three. Hope everyone can make it out for that. Um, I know that our volunteers have been working hard on some really fun activities for the folks in town. Um, another thing uh I wanna mention is we had originally um tentatively held June sixth for a volunteer appreciation event. But um Mike looked into scheduling that, um and it looked, the sixth wasn't available available um for the venue we had hoped to hold it at. Uh, the other options were June third or June tenth, uh which conflicted um with high school graduation happening on the fifth and also prevented some schedule conflicts for department heads. Uh, so we've decided to, um similar to years past, um hold off on um the volunteer appreciation until the fall. So we'll be hoping to schedule that. Um, in years past, we were trying to hold it at the Blueberry Festival, which we're trying to also get away from doing because it's not formal or effective. But I think having the timing, um the timeline similar and hosting the event in the in the fall is gonna work better for planning and schedules. So we will confirm a date for that soon. Uh, just also wanna remind um Dan and Matthew about the G P C O G General Assembly on May thirtieth, um where we should be going as delegates and alternates for that. The um school board is having its town meeting uh vote on its its portion of the budget on May sixteenth at six thirty at the high school in the cafeteria. Just wanna encourage everybody to get out um and and um get educated about what they're proposing for budget increases. Um, you'll notice, at least I I received their budget flyer, um school district's budget flyer in the mail today. Um, and I'm sure if you haven't received it yet, you will be receiving it.
What time is that?
It's at six thirty. Um, also, um Kyle is working hard on scheduling a candidate forum for those running for elect, uh local elected office. On, and then election will be held on June eleventh, which is um municipal officers, but also um our budget for F Y twenty five. So um to be determined on the candidate forum, I'm just keep an eye out for that on town communications. That's all I had. Um, Mike, did you have some updates?
Sure, I have a really brief report.
Okay, so just wanna um keep everyone uh informed about our open positions. We have positions at the transfer station. Um, we, we're actually having a new assistant clerk position. We, we're actually having a new assistant clerk position that's gonna be starting shortly. We have open positions at firefighter EMTs. We have open positions with the recreation department, summer camp positions, various seasonal positions. And we're in the recruitment process for our town engineer, project manager. We hope to have more information on that in the future for a potential person for that. And then the library just had some promotions and will have an open position as a result of that. Just want to remind everyone about the town office extended hours. They started Monday this week. So far, it's been going well. And they're Monday eight to five, Tuesday eight to six, Wednesday eight to five, and Thursday seven to three. And this helps to make town office more accessible during times when we weren't normally open. And like I said, we'll, we'll work with folks who potentially are in jams for some Friday services with code enforcement. And then all the other ones Krista mentioned.
Oh, sorry.
The only one I think you didn't mention was the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony.
Oh, yes, that's.
Memorial Day. I think the parade starts at eleven thirty and there's a ceremony at the end. And the Legion has asked me to share some words about Memorial Day. So I'll be joining folks for that.
Great, thanks.
That's all I have.
Thanks for that reminder. Is that, the parade is actually on Memorial Day?
Yes, yeah.
I always like attending that. Okay.
Oh, and I guess I'll just add, in addition to Election Day, in the meantime, we'll be sending out a, a budget flyer that's in draft form. We're, we're finalizing it for the municipal budget. And then if anyone has any specific questions or concerns about the municipal budget or wants us to speak to a group or, or update folks, that is gonna be happening over the next month or so. We're putting on a, Gray Community Television has come up with a Q and A session for both myself and Superintendent Dr. King from the school department to answer some questions about the budget. And then I'll be available all day on Election Day on June 11th to answer any questions folks may have on that day.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, I'll start with committee reports now. Marty, why don't you kick us off?
Okay. Wild Blueberry Festival will meet tomorrow night, May 8th, here, here at Town Hall at six thirty P M. As a reminder, the festival is on, on August 10th. The planning committee had a, had a site walk on April 30th in the vicinity of 123 Ramsdale Road. Was a good turnout and no meeting for the planning board in May. The finance committee meets May 14th at three P M. A community day is scheduled for May 19th from twelve to three. And the zoning board will not have a meeting in May, and that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks Marty. Matthew?
The Gray Community Television Committee met on April 24th. They meet at four P M. and I wasn't able to make that meeting because of work conflicts. Dry Mill Schoolhouse Committee met on Saturday, the 27th of April at nine A M. at the, at the Dry Mill Schoolhouse. And they were working to, there wasn't an actual meeting, there wasn't a quorum, but they were working to open up and unpack. And they're hoping to have an opening in June, no later than June 12th. Where they'll start hosting tours and things like that and doing events. Library trustees met on April 30th. As, as the town manager mentioned, lots of, lots of staff changes there and just lots of really interesting and exciting events that they're doing at the library. From storytime to movies to, you know, author talks and just amazing report there. So those are my committees that met since our, since we met last. Of course, Gray Community Television meets again on May 22nd. And that's all I've got right now. And, yeah, so that's all I've got.
Thanks, Matthew. Ann, do you want to go?
Sure. I, I, mine's quick. None of my committees have met since our last meeting. And the open space meets tomorrow, Resiliency will meet Monday. And Diane Vaughn, who we appointed to the open space committee a month or so ago, has now discovered that she has, she has a family emergency that she's gotta deal with. So she's had to resign from the committee, so we're still looking for more members. That's it for me.
Okay, I wish her well. Dan?
Yeah, I, my committees, I haven't had any committee meetings since last meeting. Marty, I just wanted to double check with you, did you say there was a planning board meeting this month?
There was not.
There's not, okay. Yep, I just wanted to make sure of that. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Dan. The ordinance advisory committee did meet on April 25th. Unfortunately, I was still under the weather and did not attend that. But we'll be reconvening at our May 14th joint workshop and then again on June 13th to continue work reviewing ordinances and land use maps and such. GP Cog's executive committee is meeting again on May 14th also, where we will be finalizing items for the general assembly happening for May, on May 30th. I'll also be joining Greater Portland Council of Governments on May 8th as part of the nominating committee for the, to nominate executive committee members. I don't believe there's any major changes that I would expect, but I will report back on what comes of that. The nominating committee recommendations will also be considered on, at the May 14th meeting. Village Transformation Project, which Ann is spearheading, is meeting tomorrow, the 8th, at ten A M. And that's all I had for committees. Dan, do you want to start us off for correspondence activities and council priorities?
Sure, I had a email from Rachel Edson and had some conversations with a couple of other people in town about the issues around Randy's letter. I received an email from Scott Liberty about a Supreme Court ruling on development fees that happened this past April. And we received an email forwarded to us from Colette. Sorry, Colette, your last name escapes me, but it was about the engineering position and our relationship with M D O T. And that's all I have for council correspondence.
Thanks, Dan. Marty?
I have no correspondence.
Mail to you?
I did, just want to let you know that I responded. I accepted the invitation to the summit on the 30th.
Great.
So I'm planning on going to that. And, yeah, nothing else. I mean, there's, there's been a fair amount of email traffic, but I think, you know, mostly stuff.
Internal, yeah. Ann?
Yeah, I also received the email from the community member, Rachel, regarding the Randy Cookson letter. Had a couple of comments from community members regarding an issue on Facebook related to the town budget and, and town employee. And I think that got resolved. We have not yet met with Nig Loster regarding a Safe Streets for All grant, but are hoping to after May 20th. And I received an invite from Jen Dupuy regarding the Trex recycling program. There's another meeting on that this Friday and I'm afraid my schedule won't allow me to attend, but I'm really grateful for her leadership on this. And this is somehow, I, I'm, I'm not sure the details, but somehow if the town collects enough plastic waste, then it can get recycled or they'll get a free bench through the Lions Club. So that she's spearheading that, so thanks for that. That's it for me.
I think my mother-in-law did a similar program with the bench after collecting recycling and it was successful. They have, they have since received a bench, so.
That's good.
I just want to mention, I forgot the rec committee met last night also. And they're really trying, they're, they're working on their fundraising for their scholarship programs for camps and things like that. Hope folks attend, so.
Great.
Anyone interested in, in that should contact the director.
Okay. I'm just gonna report out on some things I had. I also have received several correspondence from individuals regarding the budget and our use of TIPS for the economic development department and the engineering position. I attended a very fun ribbon cutting at.
Beyond Fitness.
I'm sorry, I knew their name, it just escaping me at the moment. They were grateful and are kind enough to show myself and Matthew and Mike and some town staff around the gym. And I want to encourage everyone to check it out, it's really a wonderful gym. And I think Mike will be organizing some similar ribbon cutting events for other businesses coming up, so that's exciting. And then I also have received some communications from individuals regarding Randy Cookson's apology letter that has been circulated. That's all I had. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Did you want to mention having a workshop before our next meeting to talk about the council priorities?
Oh, yeah.
Talked about that?
Yeah, we.
To try to go through the list as a whole?
Right, so we, while we were going through budget season, we kind of set aside our regular workshop time before these meetings. But I'd like to get back into having us convene at around six o'clock on these evenings so that we can have some workshop space before our budget. And I thought the first one we should do is to revisit our priorities that we talked about. So that, the meeting on the 21st, I think we'll look to start around six o'clock to.
Maybe five thirty.
Maybe five thirty.
Just because to try to go through the, go through the whole list as much as we can to kind of get me tasked on some of them and, and staff and, and things of that nature. And talk through ones that maybe we can take off with a new council in June. It might make sense to kind of thin out that list to, to make it reflect things that are achievable.
Right. I guess my one pause, and I think I mentioned this when we talked, Mike, was that if we have this meeting now and then there's a new council end of June, do we feel like we might just have to repeat ourselves again in June? I don't know, that was my one concern.
I think some of it is still critical that we should.
Yeah.
Talk about and then I can begin work.
Okay.
Or get staff to begin working on things.
All right, so are councilors available at five thirty on, was it the 21st?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Ann. Yeah, I am also. All right, yeah, let's plan to kick those back off again so that we can get back to focusing on other things besides the budget and hiring the town manager. All right, that's it for this evening, was maybe record time. Looking for a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-nine P M.
So moved.
Check.
Okay, and then, I'm still awkward for me, but we don't have to vote on this one by one, so all those in favor to, for adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, yep, everyone's ready to go. Okay, feel better, Ann?
Thanks.
All right, goodnight.
Yep, see ya, bye.